Welcome MP Duncan, it's good to have you here. It is great to have updates from your perspective. I think it's important for you to meet with our council and we appreciate that. And the people of Cornwall, of course, appreciate that.
Well, it's good to be back here again. It's been a few months, but I've got a different hat on here tonight with my back with my MP hat on here tonight. And over the course of the month of June, Madame Mayor and council, I'll be visiting each of our local councils in the riding. I've also had a good chat with Grand Chief Benedict, who's going through election season right now, but hope to meet with their newly elected council in July and continue to work on some issues of mutual concern and do the same thing. Provide you with some information, but also give you the opportunity to ask me some questions or to give the feedback as to what you're hearing. Like you, I'm probably finding it a little bit different and more difficult these days to keep your ear to the ground on issues and what people are thinking and feeling. So these presentations will hopefully be helpful in getting some feedback from you. I want to mention tonight and the reason for doing this, I hope to do this on an annual basis, if not more, by your invitation. If there's specific issues that you want to have myself as a delegation to give me feedback on, I encourage you to do so. But I thought at least once a year to come and give you some perspective of where I've been coming from and my work here in Ottawa on issues. There's no shortage of them, to say the least, and try to localize them of what it means for our community. So I do have a slide deck, which I will bring up here to navigate the conversation. And just making sure as I do this to make sure it'll work. I think it's going okay there. In trying to narrow town into a 10 or 12 minute presentation, six topics is what I was able to narrow it down to. But certainly if you have others you want to discuss, more than happy to do that. Giving an update on my constituency office, on the Transport Canada Lands, on Via Rail, on the 988 National Suicide Hotline. And then also discussing the issues of affordable housing and renting availability in infrastructure, many of which I know are your local priorities. So happy to update you on those. So just to give you an update, as with COVID and services being offered, my Cornwall constituency office on Brookdale Avenue continues to be busy, mostly by phone and by email, but we are reopening to walk in traffic. Our advice is you're talking to constituents that may have concerns if it is passport, if it's CPP, old age security, disability tax credit, immigration, Veterans Affairs files, anything to do with Canada Revenue Agency, our team is there to help. We're going to be, we're open there Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. And we just do recommend if you're talking to anybody that's looking for service, give us a call first. The pandemic has certainly not given us much positive, but the one thing it has done is we're able to do a lot more by phone and email now, where people don't necessarily need to come in, so encouraging that. And of course, most of you know my EA, Adrian Bugeli. I have his email there and encourage you, if you have any specific issues and want to connect with me, Adrian is the person I joke that controls my life and my schedule and tells me where to be and when. So please, I encourage you to keep updated and in contact with Adrian if there's anything we could help you with, big or small. To focus on the Transport Canada Lands and I, Madame Mayor and I, we have some regular meetings with the CIO Jim McDoel and the strat team, which I think has been very helpful over the course of doing that monthly and helps us keep some of these issues on the front burner. I believe very firmly that the city of Cornwall, a main priority for you, we've heard that loud and clear, is the successful divestiture of the Transport Canada Lands along the waterfront in Cornwall. I shared this week the great news between the city and Aquasosny of the survey and feedback being sought about the portlands. That is wonderful to see and it is an amazing opportunity for our city and our region. And I firmly believe that we can do something similar with the Transport Canada Lands that are here. I've had some briefings from Transport Canada officials, but unfortunately with the pandemic, a lot of things have been put on the back burner. We're hoping to resurrect those now and get those conversations and timelines back on track. And frankly, hopefully be quite aggressive in terms of the conversations between interested parties on this. I go back and I look and I've had the opportunity to tour and walk through most of these areas. Again, it speaks to a ton of potential that those lands provide for our city and the region. The one thing I put as an MP goal here, and I will be working with Madame Mayor and you as council in the coming months on a few different local files. On this one, I am a firm believer, local decisions made by local voices. Transport Canada has a wide portfolio of surplus land across the country. I firmly believe that a divestiture locally is best, and I know there's different parties between the city. Aquasosny has expressed an interest in various partners, but I believe the quickest and best way is if we can see those lands transferred to local control in some way and the decisions being made by the city. I think of the work that you've done on the waterfront plan, I think of the work now being done, I'll speak to later on housing and opportunities there. I firmly believe that the decisions being brought down locally can make them the most fast. And I think the ones that be most appreciated and respected by the community because they're done by Cornwall residents, not Ottawa or Toronto or people that may not be as connected to that land. So this is something that unfortunately has been on the back burner, one of many things. But I'm committed to making sure that we move forward on this in a timely manner. The next one, and I appreciated the delegation, well, I should say, appreciated the fact you had a delegation. I would share the concerns and frustrations you had and the quality and the depth of that presentation with Via Rail. To give you a context, I had been quite frustrated and even trying to get a briefing myself a couple of months before and received similar information and was equally as unimpressed, I believe, as what council has conveyed on that. I'd convinced them frankly, that it would be necessary and respectful to provide an update to city council. I'm glad they did that, but again, I think a lot of work and it shows a lot of work needs to be done. I went back and did some research with my staff and there was not a delegation at Kingston City Council, but the CEO at the time of Via Rail met with Kingston Mayor Brian Patterson. And Mayor Patterson, who's been a friend for years, brought forward a motion to council back in August 2017, where Kingston supported the high frequency rail project and encouraged it to get done. I haven't, wasn't around in 2017, but I don't believe the city of Cornwall or local officials were given that same briefing and that same opportunity. It certainly raises questions as to why they would go to one city that has a train station and ask for support, but not to others. And I think if it was a positive, you know, if it is to be a positive plan and it is to be a net benefit to Cornwall, you should be bragging, you should be begging to come to city council at the next available opportunity to say, hey, look what we're doing for the city and how we're handling this. So I remain concerned and I share your concerns and I've been working with the mayor and senior staff on this. A few things that I want just to mention on this as well, I've put an order paper question in. One of the things and the reason I specifically show this photo is I love taking the train and have numerous times from Cornwall to Toronto and back, and even to Montreal a time or two. Respectfully, the Cornwall station and its capital or lack of capital investment is concerning alone. You look at Brockville, Kingston, Coburg, Oshawa stations, they've all seen significant refurbishment and upgrading of their station. We've not seen that in Cornwall and that's a cause for concern. So one of the things that I've done is try to get some information from Via through some tools that I have and resources I have as member of parliament. So I just want to read to you what I'm going to be asking for and hopefully getting no later than this fall, but hopefully even sooner, some open, an open and quick response from Via. Is with regards to the Via Rail station in Cornwall, Ontario, a full listing of the details of all capital investments which have occurred at the station since January 2010, including the date of the investment, the project completion date, a description of the project and the amount of the investment. Two of the other questions that I have, I think are going to be helpful for us in determining Via's commitment to the Cornwall station and its future. What is the daily train schedule, including the number and times of all stops at the station since January 2010? And thirdly, how many individual departures and arrivals were made at the station by month since January 2010? I think that's going to put some facts on the table and as I've said before, this is either going to confirm there's a problem or debunk a myth if that's what's happening there. So I'll continue to work on this issue and working to raise the local awareness of the issue locally through some petitions and some calls to action for interested residents to keep updated on our work on this specifically. I believe most councils in the riding have received support request from myself on behalf of my colleague Todd Doherty. I don't need to tell anybody here that the toll on mental health over the course of the last year and a half has been strenuous and we've seen unfortunately a drastic rise in the number of mental health interventions and unfortunately the number of suicides in our own community. Without getting too personal, I, you know that perhaps may know that I write cards of condolences to local families on a family member's passing. And last week really hit home personally for me when I wrote sympathy cards to three men under the age of 35 who had committed suicide in our area. It is a pressing and growing unfortunately concern and we need to do, not only have more resources on the frontline. I think how we do intervention and how we offer support needs to change. So we've offered the creation, I think of a tool that can go a long way, not a solution, but can certainly help. And that's a creation of a three-digit National Suicide Hotline that's easy to remember, easy for people to access to get help whenever they're in their time of need. We're hoping to get an expedited process. We've had hundreds and hundreds of municipalities, large and small across Canada, support this legislation. It is bipartisan, there's been overwhelming support. We want to continue to build the pressure and the urgency of getting this created. So if city council has not already, it would be wonderful to have your support to build on this project. Affordable housing, I've enjoyed the couple of meetings we've had with the mayor's task force on affordable housing. It is certainly an issue in every single part of our riding, in every single part of our country. This is a passionate project of mine because it brings me back to my municipal roots, which I miss dearly and gives us an opportunity, I think, and at the federal level in a lens of what we can do. I just want to bring an angle to let you know some of the things that I'm doing on my end. The frank reality is the diversified forms of housing and some of the things that are being undertaken through the mayor's task force are great, but they're of a provincial or municipal nature. There are two things, or actually three things I want to highlight to you that I believe the federal government could take a better leadership role in. We had an opposition day motion on housing, the rising cost and the lack of supply in this country. And there's again, three things. Number one, a freeze on non-resident foreign buyers. It is becoming a more serious and serious issue, just not in large cities, but it's rippling across this country. Number two, we need to tackle money laundering in real estate, which is becoming a more serious and growing concern. It's inflating the market and making it more difficult for people to achieve homeownership. And the other thing I want to speak about and as a personal passion of mine, we've been talking about and advocating for tax incentives for purpose-built market rental housing. One of the tools, I've mentioned this at county council last week, is that we need to look at some serious tax incentives. For developers that I speak to, a few locally, but associations across the country, more people are more apt to build condos where they can sell them off and make their profit and be done with that investment and have a return on investment quite quickly. We're seriously lacking in rental housing in many parts of this country. A way we can do that, I believe, for an example, is waiving the HST or the GST on purpose-built housing for the rental market. I believe that could be a serious incentive that could re-interest people in that market and an opportunity. And without that, I worry, we're going to continue to see developers focus on condos and a quick return on investment. For an example, they can sell the condo quite quickly, recoup their HST or pass that on to the seller. Whenever you're building purpose-built market rental housing, you have to incorporate that in your rental costs and it takes a very long time in many cases to get a project up and going and to get your return on investment. So these are some tools I think we need to do. We need to address supply, we need to have affordable housing options offered by the government, but it's not going to be the sole answer to our challenges. I believe this is certainly something that is worthy of conversation and that I'll be advocating for. And lastly, I just want to mention as infrastructure funding, making sure we get our fair share is something that's important as my job and I know with MPP Jim McDoel. But I want to highlight the photo here of the Charlan Arena in Williamstown that was announced recently. We, there will be no shortage of political party promises of spending dollars on infrastructure. It is a kiosk of our residents, it is desirable to get our fair share back. But the one thing from my experience at the municipal level, and it's been exacerbated here in Ottawa, and this has been an issue of liberal and conservative governments, of federal and provincial governments. This is not new and it is not a one-party issue. But where we need to improve is the timeliness of these programs. There is, in the case of Charlan, to get approval to replace your ICE service in March or April, you can't turn around your budgeting process, your RFPs, awarding the tender and getting them out to complete it in the construction season. And we're seeing far too many projects happen, especially locally, where the funding is not being received in appropriate time for councils to budget properly and to put them out to RFP at a proper time and to complete them in that construction season. So although we have an announcement for an example of this arena here, it won't be for another year that shovels are in the ground. So we need to work on the timelines and if we're going to have a municipal infrastructure program, it needs to be, I believe, applications open and closed, decisions made in October or November of the year, where councils can go in knowing to include it in their budget, they can get those RFPs out when they should be in a timely manner and shovels can hit the ground and get going in the spring as soon as the weather allows it. I think you're going to get better costs, you're going to get better RFPs and you're going to get infrastructure projects built quicker. The last thing I'm going to mention is two important programs that have been around for several years. The Enabling Accessibility Fund for Improving Accessibility. I continue to encourage municipalities and your partners to apply for that program, as well as the New Horizon for Seniors Program. If you are interested in applying those, speak to Adrian in our office. We're happy to do letters of support, advocate for these projects and to get those done. And lastly, I tried to keep it as quick as I can. I'll take my MP hat off and put on my volunteer hat on, just to give you an update on the newspaper digitization project. When I get wrapped up here in Ottawa, the next couple of weeks, I'll be refocusing my attention on that, but we've been making some good progress on that. And I look forward to coming back to council with administration in the coming months on this. As you may be aware, we launched the SD and G rural version of the online archives, 210,000 pages of newspapers digitized. Whether you like it or not, you can now search your own name and see your history of things in many local rural newspapers. And Don Smith and Helen at the library, and I will say our local newspapers in the city of Cornwall have been fantastic to work with and I'm very excited about continuing this project. We've had great meetings with Library and Archives Canada, the Archives of Ontario and some local partners as well. And I think we're going to be very impressed with the wide number of pages from Cornwall newspapers that are going to be available to us. So with that, Madame Mayor, I apologize for going over the delegation time, but look forward to any questions or comments from you and members of council.
Thank you for that presentation. I'll just make a few comments and then I'll certainly check in with council to see if they have comments and questions. I want to thank you for meeting with me and the MPP on a monthly basis. I think that that is something that is very useful and I'm glad to see that continuing and becoming part of our routine. The Housing Task Force, thank you for your comments about particularly the tax incentives. You know, our council has also looked at tax increment grants at our planning advisory committee. And so I think all levels of government have to be very active on this housing file and find ways where we can, you know, continue to make this really, really the top urgent issue that it is for most communities. Via Rail, yes. That was a difficult presentation to receive. I just want to let you know, MP Duncan, that I have also written to follow up, following that presentation. The presenter made a number of promises around giving us some information. So we want to follow up with him and invite him once again, or someone else from Via, to come and provide us with a lot of the questions that you just asked in your presentation. So again, it's good to see that we're working in partnership. It looks like we're going to need all hands on deck to deal with the Via Rail issue. I'd like you to follow up with this council on the suicide hotline, please do so. So that's a good conversation to continue in terms of services. And I'd like to also say to you, MP Duncan, that I was heartened to see you at the vigil that was organized by the Chowdhury family for the victims of the terrorist attack in London, Ontario. It was a very solemn and dignified coming together of lots of community members. And it's always good to see you and the MPP and councillor Talde was there as well to show support for our local community that is feeling the pain and the grief of that. So it was, it was good to see you there. Council. Do you have questions for MP Duncan? I'm going to start with councillor Grant and then councillor Gardner and then councillor McDonald. Councillor Grant.
Thank you, Madame Mayor and welcome Eric. One thing I would like to know is when we're dealing with the waterfront lands, will we be dealing with the Transport Canada or the Canada Lands Corporation?
Very good question and we are working on the same thing. My understanding is a transport to Canada, all surplus lands, the federal government end up in the Canada Lands organization. So we're kind of keeping open in who the main contact is. We've been going through the minister's office. I will say the small town of Ottawa, the new Transport Minister Omar Al-Ghabra was a committee colleague of mine in the House and Procedural Affairs. And so I got to know Omar quite well and his staff have been very responsive to some of our recent questions and inquiries on this. So I'm working with the Minister of Transport's office and my concern about the Canada Lands organization is sometimes the red tape and the burdensome and the rigidness of what they're there. I think there could be some creativity here and perhaps a model. So I'm working directly with the minister's office right now, but that may switch to another department. I'm hoping perhaps some creative solutions could be found before we get bogged down into a multi-year process in terms of divestiture.
Thank you, and I think that's a good way of looking at it. Transport Canada seems to be a lot more receptive to our kind of dialogue, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Gardner and then councillor McDonald.
Thanks for being here, Eric. Eric, the infrastructure funding, you may be not the one to answer this, but is there any funding that may be coming forward for the Arts Centre? And I'm not sure where we are with that. I just got cut off, so I'm back on the screen. I don't even know if you discussed it, however, that's the question I want to ask. Are you aware of anything being done to get funding for the Arts Centre?
Yes, thank you councillor, yes. So on that, there is some funding envelopes through the Department of Canadian Heritage that I actually going back when I was working for GE, we had a really good partnership with the Upper Canada Playhouse. And just to give you an idea of that, of where it was a few years, actually going back maybe about seven, eight years ago now. But there are some envelopes of funding for infrastructure and for growth on that. So I will certainly, as the city is prepared, I know you're going through the plans and the design aspect right now. We'll make sure we can connect on some of those and what options are available for that. The one thing I will say as well, as my light goes off in my office, I haven't moved fast enough here, is to say that we can prepare for that. The Upper Canada Playhouse received money for their expansion into, I think it was a quarter million dollars at the time, which was a significant amount. So the short answer is yes, we are aware of that an application and ask will be coming and certainly will work on the behalf to get some answers and to get our fair share of funding again, back particularly when it comes to the arts.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your answer, Eric, and I appreciate the fact that you're working for us as hard as you are.
Councillor McDonald and then councillor Reba.
Thank you, Madame Mayor, and I'll piggyback on councillor Gardner's comments for a moment, just to thank you personally, Mr Duncan, for your personal contribution to the Arts Centre over a year ago. It's, it's good to see the personal contribution there backing up the lobbying that goes on as well. So of course, I'm most interested in Via Rail and I'm wondering if you're hearing from your colleagues across the country. Is this, I know it's not every community because many communities are on the planned a high-speed rail line. It looks as though we are not, but are there a lot of municipalities coming forward registering their dismay?
Thank you councillor McDonald, and yeah, so I was happy to make, actually I should say that maybe some federal tax dollars are coming to the Arts Centre. Part of my proceed from donating my MP raise is going over the course, the next couple of years to the Arts Centre. But you can't say no to Katie Burke whenever she asked and Brian, they've done a wonderful job in the fundraising. To your point on Via Rail, no, there actually is not. From what I've seen before in terms of Via Rail's gone out and I think frankly, they've gone to certain communities. They went to Kingston, they've gone to Ottawa, made presentations where the high frequency rail going up north through Ottawa and the dedicated line going down through Peterborough, they've gone to ensure support for that. The Wardens Caucus, my understanding, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus have given their support for the project. But I think and even to the point, whenever I was speaking with Via Rail, a lot of the devils in the details in terms of the frequency and the opportunities, I don't, I don't say that it's necessarily a bad thing if things are scheduled properly and there's numerous stops of going to Kingston, catching an option from there and going to Toronto. But if it's only once or twice a day, they're not at proper times of the day. I'm just not convinced because I've seen the details, they say, oh, well, that's to be determined later, oh, we're not sure yet. Well, to me is those are things when you're proposing for significant federal dollars, I think those things should be nailed in a little bit better. And those benchmarks of what the number of stops, the number of arrivals and departures each day, that should be known or there should be some assurances to all stops along there. So I think they focused on municipalities that are getting positively impacted by the Ottawa-Peterborough route. And I think, you know, I go back to the same thing, back in 2017, they went to, you know, Kingston for support. The CEO had a direct meeting, why wouldn't they do the same thing to Cornwall if it wasn't a net positive? So at this point, there's more questions than answers and I go back to use the same line. If it is a great plan, if it is going to be a net positive to Cornwall, you should be doing cartwheels coming into town, excited to pump up this plan. And we've not seen a lot of answers and we've not seen a lot of detail. And just from my experience in, you know, elected office, that's not a good thing. Usually I'm thinking if there's going to be a net benefit to somewhere, the organizations, the first one out to the community to say, hey, we got good news for you. So I will keep on this and I apologize for the telephone tag you and I are playing, but we will keep connected on this. And I think our job now is on the radar and making sure that the public is aware and making sure that Via Rail is aware of our concerns and hesitation on some of the details or lack thereof. And I will echo the mayor's comments that I think another presentation to city council would be warranted. And I think perhaps even the CIO of the organization might be an appropriate one to do that. I think would probably from a, I'm not a perfect expert in government relations, but I think that visit would be due.
Well, I have to say, I read the most discouraging interview with the CEO of CN and throughout he mentioned the profits that they stood to make from their customers and it was apparent that customers were not travelers, they were the producers shipping freight. So there's certainly a lot of work to be done and I look forward to connecting with you.
Thank you, and I'll just add as well, I know you've been an advocate for several years, including at AMO. Via's importance is more important than ever before, particularly with Greyhound and the bus industry being absolutely decimated in the country as well. So Via to me is the most accessible frontline, you know, transportation service we have for people. Keeping it available and keeping it as affordable as possible for people is something now with the bus industry being in serious, serious condition in the country.
Yeah, for sure, I look forward.
Thank you.
That was definitely raised for the presenter, that aspect of Greyhound closing. And, and Via is funded as part of a connector for communities in Canada. So that was important to mention too. The presenter who was not, not excited to be in front of city council MP Duncan, he wasn't doing cartwheels or excited to present, so.
I try to be politically correct, but I will absolutely agree with your assessment there.
The next question is from councillor Reba.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. My question is about the suicide hotline. You've mentioned you hope we can support you, how can we do that specifically? Are there any action items we as a municipal council can take to show our support? Can we move a motion, a letter of support, what are you looking for?
A letter of support would be wonderful. We've, I believe through the clerk, it's sent a template letter of support that other municipalities have offered before on this. And I say it's twofold, number one, it's specifically for the 988, the three-digit number. But as well, I think it's a continued call to action. One of my, you know, the things, and I guess it's the same at the municipal level, we do a lot of action plans and studies and reports and analyses. I think it's very clear that we need more frontline mental health services. Look no further than a beautiful building beside the hospital that's catering to mental health services, rightfully so. But the waitlist for somebody that needing a mental health intervention and to say the waitlist is six months, we don't need more studies and reports and best practices, we need that investment in frontline services. And one of the topics that we've been talking a lot about lately in Ottawa is particularly on opioids and addictions and that aspect of mental health. To have the waitlist and the cost for private services astronomical, and I think it's one of those things that's really hidden. So if council would be willing to support the 988 project, but just in continuum as well, dollars going to frontline services, not more studies or more overhead or those types of things, I think they need to get to the frontline. It is a big undertaking, it's a big piece to bite and to chew, but we certainly need to do that.
And then if I take my councillor hat and put my SDC hat on very quickly, what can the nonprofit and the service extra do to support this? Is there a template for letters of support for the rest of the community? what can the nonprofit and the service extra do to support this? Is there a template for letters of support for, for the rest of the community?
Absolutely. I'd be happy. What I'll do is I'll send you an email with that template as well for the organization, the more voices. And we've had municipalities, we've had not-for-profits, we've had conversations with the Canadian Mental Health Association and, and different stakeholders nationally. There's broad support for this. One of the challenges is just to give you an idea of it, it's easy to do to create the number, but the challenge is, is making sure if you dial that number, it's managed by the provincial, you know, or, you know, regional government. At that point, there needs to be a service on the other hand, to be able to handle that intervention. So part of that is making sure we beef that up at the same time as well. But I'll certainly get you that template, the more voices and the more diverse from organizations, municipalities, it just keeps the, keeps the snowball going.
Excellent. Please share. And my final comment, thank you for reminding us about the SDG Archives. I pulled it up quite quickly here and found my letter to Santa from nineteen ninety-five in the Glengarry News. So thank you for that. I got a good little laugh out of that.
Wonderful. The first thing I found was my birth notice from my parents in November nineteen eighty-seven. So I thought that was kind of neat.
Nineteen eighty-seven. Any other comments or questions from council? MP Duncan, thank you very much for coming to present to us and we will be following up on the various items that you've discussed in collaboration, in partnership.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the invitation or the opportunity to be here and to say, reach out anytime and happy to chat and look forward to a patio drink with many of you over the course of the summer here. Take care and stay well, everybody.
Merci beaucoup. Vous aussi.